Board of Finance Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Call is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now I'll move on to presentation. County Treasurer, Madam Treasurer, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody. My name is Nancy Burse and I'm County Treasurer of Burnaleo County. It's good to see you all. So today we're going to be reporting on the quarter ending December 31st of 2022. So that was our last quarter. And I point you to the report that we have in your packet. And there's your agenda on the second page outlining where everything is on the pages. And the next page actually starts looking at your property taxes. That's the quarter that we're very interested in or involved in collecting first half quarter taxes for 2022. So you see the three years there, 2020, 2021, and 2022. And the net taxes that we were charged to collect, 815 million for this year. The taxes we collected during that first half, 460 million. And the taxes left to collect for second half, 355 million. You will note that there's a big jump in that net taxes charged from 757, 77, 7, sorry, to this year at 815. And we were looking at that because that's one of the largest jumps we've had in the past 10 years tax roll. So when we looked at that, we really saw that net increase as really coming down to increased property values. Our mill levy rates didn't go up that much. So it's really on the property value side that we had a huge increase. More than we've seen, as I said, in the past 10-year tax roll. And when you think about that, think about what's happened in '21 and '22. We had a real estate market that just boomed. Houses weren't even staying on the market for a day or two at very high values. And now we're starting to collect on those high-value property taxes. So that's what you see there. The next page talks about what is that tax collection rate? So we have the 10 years there. And on the 10 years, this is the first quarter that you'll see that earliest year drop off. So you saw 2012 drops off, so we can add 2022 at the bottom to make your 10-year tax roll. So for this year, again, 2022, it was collecting just over 50%, 56.43%. And that's relatively normal for us. Again, this is first half. You're not going to see 100% collections a little bit later in May or June. We'll have that for you. So there's your tax collection rate.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Madam Chair.
I just have a quick question on the difference of how the property assessment went up. Do you have the information on, was that all of the area of Burnaleo County? Was it a specific area of Burnaleo County that property taxes went up, that values of properties went up? Do you have that information?
We do not.
So that would just come from the assessor's office, right?
Well, it just comes from the values that we have on our tax bills.
So there's no specific area where that was county-wide, or was it a specific area that their taxes went up?
Madam Chair, Mr. Commissioner Casado, we did not slice and dice the data that way. We're glad to do that for you if you'd like, or if the commission would like that, we're glad to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please continue.
So going back to page three, property tax collections. This is kind of your new slide. This is, we're trying to head towards a dashboard type of configuration. So we put in a lot of what we do operationally for those collections. So if we start at the top left, you look at your call volume. Before, there were graphs that you saw. We're just putting these into little boxes now for you with pictures. So for the quarter ending December 31st again, we took over 10,000, almost 11,000 calls for that quarter. And that's very standard for first half. When we looked at each month, it was in November that topped out at about 5,000 calls for that month. So when people do get their tax bill in the mail, they do tend to pick up the phone and call if they have any questions. Speaking of tax bills, there's your breakdown of how many were residential and how many were non-residential. And altogether, it was 276,987 tax bills that we sent out. And that is by far the largest of any county in New Mexico, and that makes sense. We're the urban capital of the state with the highest population and the highest properties. So that fits in perfectly. Below that is delinquent collections. Again, did a fantastic job, and I know my staff is here, with collections for that quarter, topping out at just over 6 million for that quarter in delinquent accounts. And again, when people get their tax bill, it's on there if they have any delinquent taxes. And they start going, "Oh, I gotta pay that." And so we start collecting not only the delinquent taxes, but also the current rate. Next slide is the annual delinquent transfer to the state. Remember, I can only collect for up to three years, delinquent, and then I turn it over to the state. The state starts their collections up to and including delinquent tax auctions. So that is their bailiwick to do. And we were at 517. That's again, an annual thing that we look at every July? Yeah, every July. So we'll see and take a look at it this July. It really has started to come down from COVID. COVID, it jumped up to over 700. So that was not a good year. So we're starting to come down back to what's in our normal range. We did add the monthly payment plan. This is our 10-month payment plan. Those people that don't have a mortgage and aren't delinquent, usually they're on fixed incomes. And it's better for them, instead of paying twice a year, huge amounts. It's better for them to slice off 10 months, each month, pay a little bit. And we break it out for them and tell them how to pay and even send coupons for them. So that's 4,300, a little bit over, 4,328. That's about standard. We've been running at that for quite a while. But that's a program we love to tout, especially for our elderly that are on fixed incomes. Next is another new one, too, just talking about how do people pay their taxes? And that's important for us because we want to have the right operations, the right systems for that. So you can see there, we break it out by the escrow and mortgage files that come in, as well as those that pay in person and/or mail, and then the online payments. We're just now starting our third year of our new online payment system. So this really starts to give us a good, clear look at how are the systems working? And where are people going? Where are the customers going that we have to meet them at? So we'd like to show you that. And then how it all pans out after I collect it, we get to turn it back over to all those entities that I collected for, right? So here's the pie chart on how the property tax was distributed. So again, it's a very stable pie chart. None of these numbers actually changed from last year. So we're still looking at 34% of our taxes go to educational institutions. That includes APS, the charter schools, C&amp;M. The next one is the county at 22%. We have cities and villages at 21%. So you think City of Albuquerque, Village of Tejeras, Los Manchos, they get 21% of our taxes. Then in the purple is Health, U&amp;M Hospital. They average, and they get 15% of our taxes. And that's just where a single entity is, U&amp;M Hospital. The next one is the environment comprises AMAFCA, which is our flood control authority. The Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, if you live on either side of the river, you're in that conservancy district. And then we have Edgewood Soil and Water Conservancy District in the East Mountains. And they total 4%. And the state, in blue, totals 4%. We did get some questions about why do our taxes go to the state? Don't we already pay income tax? Well, we do. But you recall that the state also takes out tax bonds. So we had one just in the November ballot, actually. The state took out some bonds for veterans' homes and renovation and refurbishing of their veteran homes that the state has. And they have to pay back those bonds so they get some of our taxes as well. As we continue, I'm going to go, we're looking at the safety of where our money is, and I'm going to turn it over to my Deputy Treasurer, Ryan Travestad.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ryan Travestad. I'm the Deputy Treasurer with Madam Treasurer Burse. I'll go over the bank balances that we have, the portfolio structure, and then transition that over to Government Portfolio Advisors, the county's investment advisor, to go talk through some strategy for the coming quarter. So again, this is as of December 31st, just kind of looking back. This slide here details the bank balances and collateral associated with those bank balances and what that means. So bank accounts are collateralized or insured up to the FDIC limit. Regularly, our balances are over the FDIC coverage. And so what we do is we enter into agreements with those banks to pledge collateral securities as collateral so that in the event of a bank failure, the county obtains ownership of those securities to recoup our lost balances in the event, this kind of a worst case, so to speak. So this slide here details that for each of the accounts that we have. We look at this regularly to make sure that the county taxpayers' funds are well managed. So if you see here in the top-left corner, Wells Fargo, Burnaleo County, we had balances of around 31, almost $32 million, $750,000 of FDIC coverage, which leaves an uninsured balance of 31 million. And then the collateral that the Wells Fargo had pledged was 76.7 million, so more than enough to cover that balance as of December 31st. And again, this is just a snapshot, so these balances are changing regularly. The collateral that they're pledging is changing regularly as well. The next slide down, the next section down, we'll talk through the Burnaleo County Affordable Housing Nonprofit. This account has a $1.3 million balance at December 31st. This account, since it's structured under the Burnaleo County Affordable Housing Nonprofits tax ID number, the FDIC coverage is just a little bit different than the county's accounts, so this one only has $250,000 of FDIC coverage. So that leaves an uninsured balance of 1.1 million. And again, the Wells Fargo Bank had 1.2 million pledged as collateral, so more than enough to cover those balances as well. As we work our way through the other accounts, the Wells Fargo San Miguel County, the Bank of the West, those accounts are both below the FDIC insured amount, so those are the balances there. Main Bank, that account is also fully FDIC insured. You might ask why this $5 million has, or why this account has $5 million of FDIC coverage when the Wells Fargo account is capped at 750,000? The reason is, is the type of deposit account that this is, is it essentially splits out that $5 million into $250,000 pieces in banks across the country so that each of those accounts with those banks across the country are fully FDIC insured. And then finally, we come into the Bank of America accounts. Those are two very old repurchase agreements, investments that were entered into, I believe, in the late 90s. Those were fixed-rate investments. They come due in 2027 or 2028, I believe. But yeah, they're very high-yielding, and so there's no real reason to liquidate those. So again, those are collateralized. There's no FDIC coverage on those accounts. There's $10.8 million of collateral pledged on those two repurchase agreements. Next, we'll come into a quick economic update, and I don't want to steal the thunder from our investment advisors, government portfolio advisors. Yeah, they have a team that looks into this, yeah, a lot more detailed. But generally here on what we're seeing, there's still a lot of mixed signals, mixed signs out there in the economy. So Federal Reserve has been raising interest rates to try to cool down inflation, somewhat been working. Then we got some little bit contrary data in January that wasn't quite what they were expecting. Got some really strong jobs numbers that came out in January, so it's really hard to say what's going to happen as ever. But I think now with a lot of leading indicators with economic data, they're becoming harder to interpret. Generally, there's a, I wouldn't say a consensus, but there's murmurs of a potential shallow recession in late 2023. And so we're definitely keeping our eyes on that as we determine where to position the investment portfolios. And a good bright spot here with the New Mexico economy is that the preliminary data points that the New Mexico jobs are only 1% below pre-pandemic levels, which is really great. So yeah, then we'll also recognize that New Mexico generally lags the national economic trends. So what we're seeing on the national level, we might expect to fill a little bit, maybe six months, maybe a year after that. So again, keeping a close eye on things that are happening on the national level here. And then the next slide here, I'll go over the structure of our investment portfolios. So we have this split out into four buckets, a bond proceed bucket, operating funds buckets, which is made up of the highly liquid and liquid. That liquid, sometimes you'll hear it referred to also as a cash match bucket. And then we also have a core bucket. And so the distinction between these four buckets has to do with how they're invested and the length of time that the underlying securities are invested. So we'll start with the bond proceeds on the farthest left. This bucket is essentially managed to draw down schedules. So as the county issues debt to fund capital projects, say like road pavings or constructing buildings, we will sell bonds. We will receive those proceeds, and then we'll invest those proceeds until we get the invoices from contractors to pay those bills. So as we anticipate the contractors needing to be paid, then we'll time the investments to mature to correspond with that. Our highly liquid bucket, that's essentially as good as cash. It can be turned over in less than 30 days. There's no withdrawal penalties, anything like that. So yeah, very liquid, very usable to transfer to fund bills. The liquid portfolio, what this portfolio does is we've, it's a, essentially, we have investment securities that we schedule to mature to coincide with the timing of the county's debt payments and payroll payments. So those are two very well-known cash outflows. So if we know it and we have the money, then we'll buy an investment to mature at the same time that we'll need to distribute those funds so that we can earn some interest and then in turn use those interest funds to provide further resources for taxpayers. And then the final bucket here is the core bucket, and this is essentially cash that we don't anticipate needing in the near term. So an example of this is the county's 312th DFA reserve. So that's, yeah, kind of rolled into that core bucket and invested out a little bit longer in the zero-to-five-year space. This next slide kind of goes over what I just talked about, but gives maybe a more high level of, you know, kind of why does the county have an investment program? So essentially, it comes down to a timing difference between when money comes in and when money goes out. So again, we have inflows, regular inflows, like our property tax collection cycles, grocery receipts taxes and fees for services on the inflow side. And then on the outflow side, we'll pay vendors, payroll, debt payments. And then we distribute the property taxes that Madam Treasurer mentioned out to those entities each month. So there's a timing delay there. And so if there's a timing delay there, then we can take off, use that to our advantage to make some investments to earn some interest income, to then provide more additional resources for taxpayers. And this will detail over the portfolio balances as of December 31st. So in the operating bank account, we had 15.6 million. The highly liquid, which again is that less-than-30-day maturity, made up about 12% of the total at 120 million. The liquid had about 552 million. And one thing to note here is the December 31st, there was property tax collections that occurred in the month of December. We don't send those to the tax distribution entities until January. So in that spread of time, we'll invest those in this liquid bucket to earn a little bit of investment income before we distribute it to the entities. So you'll see next quarter, it won't be quite as high as that 552. We distributed, I believe it was $233 million to the tax-collecting entities in the month of January. And then we move down to the core portfolio, 273 million, and then bond proceeds had 27.5 million. And if you see in the farthest right column, the book yield on those investment portfolios, yeah, the highly liquid and liquid, those are a little bit shorter-term portfolios. And as the Federal Reserve has been raising interest rates from June of last year through current, those respond quite a bit faster to those increasing interest rates, which is why you'll see those a little bit higher than you will the core portfolio. The next slide will detail the underlying holdings of each bucket and those maturity structure. So as you see here in the highly liquid page, all of the securities are maturing less than 30 days. We have 60 million in the money market fund, 54 million in the local government investment pool with the state treasurer's office, and then about $5 million there with Main Bank. That makes up the 120. The next slide down goes over the liquid detail, and you can see here how this is split out. We have $5 million and $5.5 million in a money market fund, $45 million in treasuries that mature less than 30 days, $53 million in commercial paper, $8 million in Fannie Mae, 150 million in federal home loan bank, and 98 million in Fed Farm Credit. And as you can see, go down the line, we have 166.3 million that matures within 30 days and one year, and 26.25 million maturing less than two years. So very well-positioned if we have a need for cash to pay a vendor. If there's an unexpected expense, we have sufficient cash to cover those. And then finally, we'll go here on the core portfolio detail. Again, shows the structures of how each individual security, or how the portfolio is structured by security type and by duration or maturity period. And then finally, we'll go over the bond proceeds detail. So 6.6 million there in US treasuries that mature in less than 30 days. And then the final, the remaining 20.8 million that matures less than one year. And again, this portfolio is structured to meet those anticipated outflows to vendors that are performing capital projects for us. And again, just a final look at the graphical representation of the bond proceeds, core, and liquid bucket. So you see there's $376 million that, as of December 31st, there was $376 million that was coming due less than 30 days. So more than sufficient liquidity. And then we see as it tails down, 250.6 million in less than a year, 96.6 million between the one- to two-year, 57.5 from two to three, and so forth. And finally, what this boils down to is it shows into the investment income that the county's investment portfolios are earning. So as of December 31st, there was, for the quarter ending December 31st, we had $4.3 million in investment income that was earned. So you can see that's a sizable jump from the prior year and also a sizable jump from the first quarter. And so what this is, since the Federal Reserve began to increase interest rates in June, there's a little bit of a delay between when the investments mature and when we buy new investments at the higher rate. So now what we're seeing is we're going to start to see a little bit more elevated investment income due to those higher interest rates in the market.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Just to clarify, that is a big jump. Not a little bit more income, but quite a bit more income, about 100% more from last year. Well done. Well, well done, Federal Reserve for boosting those rates.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, indeed, yes, the work that the Investment Committee had completed in the first part of, or the first quarter of last calendar year helped us restructure some of that portfolio. And then so as with that restructuring work, really put us in an advantageous position to take advantage of some of the Federal Reserve rate movements that they have been completing, which is welcome. to take advantage of some of the Federal Reserve rate movements that they have been completing, which is welcome. Madam Treasurer, do you have anything to add?
Yes, as Ryan said, we had been talking to you over the past several quarters that we were over liquid, we are over liquid. We really didn't want to put a lot of our money in longer-term savings or investments because the interest rates were so low. The economy wasn't there yet, so we kind of held on, not kind of, we did. Have a lot of money in our highly liquid bucket. So in looking at what was coming down the road and how the Fed decided to continue to increase rates, it was, we were really positioned well to take advantage of that. And so you'll see, even in the previous slides that the Deputy Treasurer went over, you'll see more money in some of those accounts and in those type of investments. And again, that was where we were moving money from the highly liquid to the liquid and to the core. So once you put it out into the core from zero to five years, you're going to gain more yield. And you're gaining it very safely. And we were really pleased that these numbers came out like this when we were looking at it in January. And I know GPA, our advisors, will talk more about that. But you're absolutely right. It was, it was perfect timing. You never want to time it. But we had set ourselves up well, which means our strategy was working. We stuck with the strategy. We followed it through the first quarter of FY '23, and now the second quarter, we're starting to see it pay off. And yeah, pays off pretty nicely. Thank you.
Blessed your verbal.
Madam Chair.
Your mic is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. My question was just, I realized, even though I got this briefing earlier, that this may have also been the first time. I remember last meeting, we talked about expanding it to the four to five years before we had only had the three years. Is that also some of this impact or where does that, where have we seen impact from expanding out to four to five years when before we were just up to three, right, for maturity?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, that's an excellent point. Yeah, so generally, the longer the maturity, the higher yield you will pick up. So definitely extending that out from the three years to the five years helps pick that up incrementally. Our approach is to take that kind of cautiously step into those changes rather than just say, yeah, we're going to take, you know, put all of it, move all of it right at the same time. So yeah, incrementally, we'll start to see those grow as well. And I think the other piece where this will, that strategy will really shine is when rates are different, right? So the rate environment now is, it's atypical. It's not very often that the short, short end of the curve has higher rates than the long end. And so when that, we anticipate to balance out, you look through the course of history, that balances out where longer-term rates are usually higher than short-term rates. So when that resets, that's where we're going to see a really big advantage to the strategy that we've been deploying.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Mr. Commissioner.
Madam Chair, thank you. So with the, the current yield curve is inverted, as you're describing. And I think nine-month is about as high as it gets, and then it starts to decrease in yield. So are you currently investing in the, in the longer-term treasuries now, even with lower rates, just according to the strategy?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson, yes, we are. So if you go to that core detail that I just, I just put up, you're seeing that we're starting to put into it. But again, we are cautious in that we're very picky at whether we're going out five years or two years. So it just all depends on what comes up on the Bloomberg machine that our investment advisors see on that day or the next day when they go to invest. And I also just, Madam Chair, just wanted to address Commissioner Barboa. You were right on with that because yes, the investment policy you approved in August. So as of August is when we stretched it out to those five years. So good memory. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. Great discussion. And at this junction, I will turn it over to the county's investment advisor, government portfolio advisors. Rashad, are you, are you online?
I am.
Great, thanks. Take it away.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to the board for having me. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again. And thank you to Madam Treasurer for having me as well. We're really excited about where the portfolio is and the current state of the structure. And that's what we've worked so hard to build over the last year. And we never chase yield, we never speculate on yield, and we never make investment decisions to kind of chase the current market. But we will take what the market's giving us, and being able to have a foundation and a framework for how to operate the portfolios allows us to navigate these cycles of uncertainty really, really effectively well. And it's coming out in your interest income, and it's going to keep coming out in that facet over the coming years. If you want to jump to the slide deck, that would be great, and we can run through it.
I'm on the compliance report now. I'm not sure if you can see what I'm seeing.
I, I can't see what you're seeing.
Perfect. So I'm on the compliance report now.
Okay, great. One thing I do want to just, we would touch on this, but I wanted to address the questions really quickly because I think they're really good questions for the current state of the market. As we're deploying, call it excess cash to some of the more, the core investment portfolio, we absolutely are adding across the spectrum of the zero to five-year space. As an example, we made recent transactions across that space where we invested in the one-year space at 5.11, I think. And we also invested in the four to five-year space at about 4.10. Now, a good question is, why are you investing at 4.10 when we can get 5.10 in the near term? And it's really about that foundational portfolio structure of, we want to hold securities and we want to own yield for multiple years for the county. And so we're not just going to stick everything into short-term in order to earn higher yield today because it puts us at risk of the market changing and yields coming down, which we know they will, you know, at some point here in the near future. So we want to take advantage of the short-term where we can, which we're doing. And I can go into that in more detail here in a couple of slides. But we also want to anchor the portfolios in that three to five-year space so that as rates come down over the coming years or whatever it is, you're still earning for a little over 4% or 4.5% in some of those securities. So it really is a, is a really good risk management tactic, kind of keep the investment earnings really stable and able to navigate business cycles. Now, the first thing we like to start off with is the compliance report. And as of December 31, kind of ending the calendar year Q4 here, the county was in complete compliance with the investment, with the investment policy, which is, you can see here in the first two slides. As we go to the next slide, we wanted to do just a quarterly review, and these are just key metrics that we look at on a summary level across each of those buckets that Deputy Treasurer talked about, the bond proceeds, highly liquid, the investment core, and then the laddered liquidity or the liquid. As it was referenced, and honestly, the yield reflects the current market and the ability to kind of add capital, especially as property taxes came in, whether it was short-term or a bit longer-term in the core, all within the established and approved strategy. So that's what's really exciting is all the transactions that we're able to make is all within the approved strategy that we've talked about for several quarters now. And, you know, we've seen that book yield increase almost 100 basis points on the total portfolio quarter over quarter. So Deputy Treasurer said it better than anybody could. We're not here to chase markets. We're here to establish really sound foundational portfolio structure. And what it allows us to do is have very swift and kind of conservative decision-making to take advantage of markets when we can. And that's what we've been able to do over the last quarter and what we're excited about as we go forward in the year. We can jump to the next slide. This is just a recap of the existing strategies, and this is going back a full year, looking at three of the buckets here. First, the core investment portfolio. I know Madam Treasurer talked about a really methodical way of decreasing the highly liquid piece and adding to the core portfolio. Again, this will be the investment portfolio out zero to five years. And we've, we've kind of deployed, you know, 135, a little more than that, 135 million across the year to that portfolio and increased the book yield quite substantially. We actually added to the core portfolio, which I alluded to recently, another 20 million that was a weighted average about 4.8% in book yield. So we're continuing to look to that. We like the strategy in that portfolio, and it's working really effectively to provide you a diversification from not only the state pool but other short-term investment options. And then as we look to the laddered liquidity, again, the purpose of this portfolio is to match known operating expenses for about a year's time. This was done at a really attractive point in the market from a yield perspective where the initial deployment of that capital funding liabilities through October of 2023, the yields were between 3.5% to almost 4.5%. So that's been working really well. Maturities are coming due to fund payroll and debt service. The Treasurer's Department is doing a great job of tracking that, and we're in constant communication on kind of how well that is matching up and kind of if any excess funds need to be deployed in shorter, in the shorter term there. Now, that second bullet is a perfect example of being able to take advantage of existing portfolio structure. Without an established strategy, it's really hard to say, hey, we have excess capital that we want to invest, right? But we have a framework, we have a kind of an optimal decision tree that we work through when there's opportunity to invest short-term or longer-term. And, you know, there was a period there with property tax receipts before they were distributed to add very short-term and pick up some sizable yield on those, on those funds. And we were able to do that within the laddered liquidity portfolio. So we were really happy to take advantage of that structure. And then the, I, one note, I like to add in some recent transactions. I know we're talking about quarter-end, but we did add a small amount to the laddered liquidity portfolio to fund expenses through November of 2023. That was about 9 million at over 5% in yield. So you're kind of hitting, again, I hate beating a dead horse. We're not chasing the market, but at the same time, like, we're investing in some of the highest points of the yield curve. So going out to November picked up about a little over 5% in yield there. And then the bond proceeds portfolio, we continue to, the objective of that portfolio is just to match expected cash flows. We have invested a little over 3 million since the last board meeting we had in November. And actually, we recently invested another 1.6 million. And, you know, given the maturity structure of that, the yield was around 4.85% there too. So we can jump to the next slide, and we'll just review very briefly, or at a summary level, I won't say briefly, but at a summary level, the strategy and our recommendations for each of the buckets. If we look at the core investment portfolio, we're currently managing that portfolio to the zero to five-year all treasury benchmark. That recommendation is going to, is going to stay the same. We continue to see the zero to five-year be an appropriate measure for the county from a risk profile perspective and a kind of a duration and maturity ladder perspective. So what you can see in the table there is the current portfolio and the percent of the portfolio that's in each one of those, call them maturity or duration buckets. It's pretty much on par with the target portfolio. We like to see about a quarter of the portfolio coming due under one year. That provides a really excellent buffer to the liquidity position should those maturities need to be used to buffer the highly liquid. And then we're relatively well, well-matched out to the five-year sector. So again, to reiterate and answer to a previous question, we continue to want to stay pretty much neutral when it comes to duration. So right at 2 to 2.10 as it relates to the benchmark in the core portfolio. And then we definitely want to continue to add where it makes sense in the three to five-year sector to really anchor in what we're seeing in, you know, 15, 20-year high yields so that the county can own that yield over multiple years. And the, the second recommendation for the core strategy is actually to add to the strategic asset allocation. So for a quick context, we run a customized kind of optimization for the county's strategic asset allocation targets, which is what you can see on the left and reflected in the grid below. The pie chart on the right is the current allocation of the core portfolio. Over the past couple of quarters, we've recommended the strategic asset allocation target has been kind of a combination of agencies, treasuries, and munis. We'd like to add super nationals to that strategic asset allocation. Supernatural are securities that are already within your policy. They are AAA-rated securities as well. We conservatively want to target about 10% of the allocation over time as kind of as we see opportunities in the market for those securities. So that's something we'd like to add to our strategy as well. And I'm certainly happy to talk about that in more detail or add or go through any questions. On the right, you can see we're about 20, about a quarter percent agencies in the core portfolio. All of our recent additions have been in agencies. So I expect that allocation to continue to increase closer to our strategic target. The long story short of the overweighting in treasuries is that over the past year, we really saw supply dry up in the agency space and with rates where they were in treasuries and the supply of treasuries. It made the most sense to kind of take advantage of those securities throughout the past year. But I would expect as we go into the next couple of quarters that the agency allocation would get closer to the target. Now, if we shift to the liquidity laddered portfolio strategy, this is again a recommendation to maintain the existing strategy. We want to allow maturities, this, the strategy is to allow the maturities to go to cash to fund operating expenses for payroll and debt service. This portfolio is funded through November of 2023. And the idea would be that we would reevaluate at that time kind of when the larger revenues are coming into the county to refund that for another 12 months. So we want to keep this portfolio under 12 months. We can also use this portfolio for short-term investments, very similar to what we did this past month with property tax receipts kind of in that holding pattern before they were distributed. This is just a look at the maturities over the course of the next year for your reference. But again, these are, these are scheduled to match operating expenses. And then from there, we look to go purchase the securities that are, that are going to maximize yield, but it's always after we've solved for the maturity that's required from a cash flow perspective. And then if we jump to the next slide, the last is bond proceeds, a kind of a similar context around we're looking to match just expected cash flows. And, you know, we react to the finance division and rely on that open form of communication to understand where projects might be and when reinvestment might make sense for that particular portfolio. And then this, the last two are really just summary slides on a current look at the portfolio. The way that we like to manage the balances as it pertains to each of the buckets is we really put strict guardrails around the minimum and maximum ranges in those buckets. This is all part of our disciplined portfolio strategy, especially as we're adding or moving funds, funds from one bucket to the other, along with our current duration targets. So given the most recent additions, the operating core portfolio is closer to about 320 million. The liquidity laddered portfolio will continue to spend down as we mature those into cash to fund expenses. And then I think our highly liquid is closer to 100 million as of the current day. So I think those targets, the targets are still reasonable. And we've, you know, been in discussion with the treasurer's offices as well about the minimum and maximum ranges, particularly as it pertains to the operating core portfolio. And I'm not sure if Deputy Treasurer, you had any additional commentary there?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Rashad. Yeah, so what I wanted to mention is after the January, let me back up. So we collect property taxes in December, send them out to the entities in January. The county's portion, we retain that. So that amount that we've retained, we see opportunity to push that out into the core portfolio. The liquidity laterates matched all the way through the first half collection cycle of 2023, which will be November of this year. So we have some excess cash currently that if we were able to deploy to the core portfolio, we could then reinvest at that zero to five-year range to earn a little bit more yield than we would if we just kept it in the highly liquid or the liquidity ladder. would if we just kept it in the highly liquid or the liquidity laddered portfolio. So we've kind of run through some cash flow analysis within this past week. And we think a, a comfortable range there for the core portfolio would be either a, a minimum of 200,000 to a maximum of four, or 200 million, minimum to a maximum of 400 million. So I was going to mention that to see if there was, you know, appetite to increase that 325 million maximum in the core to 400. So we can take advantage of that, or if you would prefer that we keep it there in the either highly liquid or liquidity laddered portfolio.
Any comments? Commissioner Benson?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. It's kind of a difficult position because I, I see the, the long-term strategy where we want to do that, but with yields so, so, you know, unusually high right now in less than a year, it's not encouraging to want to go ahead and pull the trigger to start moving funds long-term, especially once, once the yield curve writes itself. I think the long-term yields should be going up from where they are now. So I'd, I'd say we hold off and maybe look at it again at our next meeting.
Great.
That, that's just my input, but I mean, it's a tough call.
It is, yeah.
I can make one additional comment as well. I think it is, it's certainly a difficult call. And, you know, if I could predict interest rates, you know, I think probably be on a beach somewhere. But that, that's not really what we're looking to do. I think primarily, you know, we, we definitely would see longer-term rates increase. And, but I think that could even be more in the seven-plus year sector, which is not really where we're operating. Currently, we'd be operating more in the three to five-year space. And even though short-term yields are higher than those particular areas of the curve right now, I don't have the data in front of me, but historically, when you look at inverted yield curves, that two to five-year space, even though it might be lower yielding today than maybe the zero to one-year space, over multiple years, it's going to outperform those shorter-term securities in an inverted curve situation. And so what we want to do right now is we definitely do not want to kind of miss opportunities in investing in that sub-12-month space if we have excess cash. That's partly what you're taking advantage of in the pool as well. But we, what we want to make sure we do is kind of anchor that portfolio in the three to five-year space so that you're owning that yield for multiple years. Because the inverted curve is definitely telling us that rates are going to come down in the short end at some point over the next, again, call it six months to two years, I would say. And so at that point, we want to be holding securities that are yielding in that four to four and a half percent range, I think. And, you know, we really like, you know, how much we're anchored in the short end and the highly liquid, combined a little bit with the laddered liquidity. And so that's really the recommendation, where the recommendation comes from is kind of solving for, it's more of a risk management technique of making sure we're anchored enough in that longer-term space so that we're not sitting on too much cash as rates come down.
Thank you. And Madam Treasurer, I, I just want to keep us on time. We have five minutes before our administrative meeting starts at 5:00. So did you have any other additional comments? And Commissioner Benson had another comment first.
Yeah, one last comment. You know, based on your comments also, the, with the yield so high in the short term, I think we probably could afford to move some of the funds to the medium term and still benefit from these short-term rates. So yeah, while I see the opportunity here, it's in terms of, you know, diversifying against the risk, it's probably a good move. And I don't think we're going to hurt ourselves because I think in the next, I think rates are going to keep going up for the next several meetings. So, which means we'll, our short-term will continue to benefit. Meanwhile, we can start to grab hold of those two to five-year. So given that, I think I'd be okay with it.
Anything for Madam Treasurer?
We had, I think, two more slides to go, but they were again, summary slides, just talking about recommendations to you that we've already mentioned in the previous slides with the core portfolio, maintaining the benchmark, adding the supras to that. The bond proceeds, again, maintaining the existing strategy of matching expenses and reinvesting. And then the laddered, again, is another maintain. So we, we think the strategy is, is working well. And, you know, we're, we're good with it. The only other thing was the other office news that we had with our customer service survey that turned out really great results for the Treasurer's Office with all customers that were coming in as being, you know, exemplary actually and excellent in the service they received. The quarter is always dedicated to tax collections for this first half. And then, of course, lastly, besides looking at the strategy, this is the meeting where the Board of Finance chooses a, a member to be on the Investment Committee for the rest of the calendar year. So that would wrap up my presentation. Thank you very much.
I, I guess in terms of process, I, I want to move to give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategy as outlined in the Board of Finance report. So do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Benson. And any discussion? Any further discussion? And I guess the, so I'll call for that vote, and then we can talk about the appointment. Or does that need to be in this?
The naming of that individual does have to be at this meeting, so it gets in the minutes and is public information.
Okay. I, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Benson to continue doing an excellent job in that role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I accept.
Great.
Thank you.
And so with that, I can call for a vote for all of, all of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Treasurer, and thank you, Deputy Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Finance. It was good to see everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Lastly, I have an announcement of the next Board of Finance meeting will be held here Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, at 4:00 PM. And if there's no other business, this Board of Finance is adjourned. Thank you.